All right, let's get this started. If my colleagues can please join me for a pledge of allegiance. Counselor Robinson? All right, calling this meeting to order. Clerk, please kick us off with a roll call.
Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Teshi. Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. Counselor Sandig.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Nine members present, you have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you Clerk. Okay, starting off with memoriam and celebratory resolutions.
Sole resolution on the agenda is for Mother's Day introduced by the Council President and all members of the Council. Whereas Mother's Day is celebrated annually on the second Sunday of May. And whereas the first official Mother's Day celebration was observed May 10th, 1908, at Andrews Methodist Episcopal Church in Grafton, West Virginia, followed by a large ceremony at Wanamaker Auditorium in Philadelphia. And whereas Anna Jarvis advocated for the national observation of Mother's Day in memory of her mother, Ann Jarvis, who was a prominent social activist in the aftermath of the Civil War. And whereas Andrews Methodist Church was incorporated as the International Mother's Day Shrine in 1962 as a dedication to all mothers and a memorial to Anna Jarvis. And whereas on May 8th, 1914, Congress passed a law declaring the second Sunday in May as Mother's Day, with President Woodrow Wilson issuing a proclamation the following day, formally declaring Mother's Day. And whereas mothers have made immeasurable contributions toward building strong families, thriving communities, and a strong nation. And whereas the work of mothers is of paramount importance in the lives of their children, along with families and communities, but is far too often undervalued. And whereas we honor ourselves and the mothers in the city of Chelsea and across the United States when we revere and emphasize the importance of the role of the home and family as a true foundation for our community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, recognize May 11th, 2025 as Mother's Day by celebrating and urging all residents of the city of Chelsea to celebrate the crucial role of mothers in the city of Chelsea and across the world.
Thank you Clerk. Can I get a motion? Counselor Sandig?
Yes, well, my mom is on my mind right now. And I'm asking you all to keep her in your minds. She's a great woman and she had a fall on Thursday, so she was in the hospital and was just moved to rehab. So, she needs some love right now. But she's at Leonard Florence Short Term Rehab in Chelsea, which is very exciting. It's an incredible facility. So, I'm so glad that she'll be close. But she's struggling right now. She spent her 84th birthday on Saturday in the hospital and now will be at rehab for Mother's Day.
Thank you Counselor, we will definitely keep mom in our thoughts and prayers. Counselor Brown, could you also do a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to adopt under suspension if there's no objections.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. Just want to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day. It's a great time to just reflect on our mothers. It's also a sad time for those that's lost their mothers. They still reflect on their mothers, so our thoughts and prayers are with those that are grieving on the loss of their mothers. And, you know, my colleague, Friday night, we were together and she was telling me about her mom's birthday coming up and she had felt that day, so we keep her in our prayers and our thoughts. But most importantly, we are all here because of our mothers. I mean, all of us can stand up and talk about an hour about our mothers, but I just want, again, to recognize the mothers here on the council. I wish you ladies a Mother's Day, happy Mother's Day. I know you work hard, not only here, but in your homes with your children. And it's just an extension just to have that gearing and the love and the care that we get from our moms. So, happy Mother's Day, everyone that's watching. If you're a mother, if not, you know, if you're an auntie, you still have to, you know, be that mother for that child. Thank you.
That's right, thank you Counselor. Counselor Recupero.
I lost my mother and I wish she was here. Mothers is the greatest gift any of us can have. Without them, there would be none of us. So, respect your mother and always cherish her, because one day she won't be here. So, enjoy them and treasure them like they're gold, they're more than gold.
Thank you Counselor.
Happy Mother's Day to all.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Teshi.
I'm going to say it in Spanish. Aprovecho esta oportunidad para darle gracias a la concejal Nora Liz por introducir una resolución a favor del día de la madre. Realmente mi mamá es quien yo soy básicamente, ella es la razón por la cual estoy aquí. Estoy verdaderamente agradecido de todo el trabajo que ella puso para que yo pudiera salir adelante. Y pues por eso es que yo siempre tengo la determinación de darle con todo, como dicen los salvadoreños. Entonces aprovecho el momento también solo para enviar un mensaje a ella también y decir que te amo mucho mamá.
Que vivan todas las mamas. Okay, moving on to, no public hearings this evening, public speaking. Is anyone here for public speaking? Okay, alrighty, public speaking closed, approval of the minutes.
We have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council dated April 28th, 2025.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Except to file the minutes under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none, thank you Counselor.
Madam President, I'd like to suspend the rules for a second and move out of order the appointments to boards and commissions. I know we have at least one or two of the folks here, so I'd just like to move them all out of order so that we can give folks the rest of the evening if they would like to return to their families.
Seeing no objections Counselor, thank you.
And then I'd like to move to a roll call vote.
Alrighty. Yep, pick us up.
We have a communication received from the city manager being read for the second time, requesting council approval of avoidments to boards and commissions. Dear councilors pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions. Appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. Cameron Kirkpatrick. Appointment to the Historical Commission, Ms. Nia De Young. And appointment to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Mr. Raymond Morales. Roll call vote requested? Yes vote to adopt?
Yes, just want to say one quick thing, Madam President.
You have the floor Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, we're going to adopt these board members. Want to just thank the board member that's here today. Also, I want to thank those that's leaving those boards for the work and the dedication they gave to the board. I was speaking to one of the members of the Historic Commission on Friday night. They were excited about the two new members that's coming on. I know we had some folks and because of their health and because of the time that's required, they're no longer able to do it. But we're grateful for the folks to come on to want to take on these responsibilities. These are unpaid positions and we need people to fill them. So, I want to thank you for your service that you begin with the Housing Authority and also the two that's going to be on the Mass Historic Commission. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Counselor. All right, moving on to our vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. Counselor Sandig.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Nine members in favor, zero opposed, and two absent. Appointments approved.
Congratulations, thank you for your service. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Resuming regular business, we have communications from the city manager. First communication received from the city manager, providing an update on the comprehensive master plan. Dear councilors, I am pleased to provide you with an update on the city of Chelsea's comprehensive planning process, Chelsea Palante Onward, following the Second Steering Committee meeting held on April 16th. Over 150 comment cards were collected at Chelsea Palante Fest on March 15th. UTLA, our consultant team, along with city staff, had over 200 conversations with Chelsea residents and stakeholders during what we hope will become an annual event to celebrate our city. We're still in the information gathering phase and survey outreach ongoing, with 167 respondents to date. The survey closes May 23rd and we would appreciate it if you would direct residents to the link below so we can capture as much feedback as possible. Key takeaways from the engagement work so far include: Strong appreciation for Chelsea's diversity, community resources, and transportation access. And priorities raised include affordable housing, more recreational spaces, cultural events, and safer streets. Additional research conducted by the UTLA team has illuminated the following findings. Chelsea is younger and more densely populated than the state average. Overcrowded housing remains a significant challenge. Three-quarters of residents are renters and large multifamily housing predominates. And most people who live in Chelsea work in Chelsea. The next phase of the process will focus on developing the planned framework, including visioning workshops, scenario development, and identifying implementation strategies. Visioning workshops will take place throughout the summer. In the fall, additional survey work will commence based on feedback from the engagement work in the spring and summer. These are alternative surveys, which will give people choices and opportunities to prioritize what they believe is best for Chelsea. Running out the fall and...
Counselor Brown.
Madam President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading and adopt the, except and file under suspension, please. And I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank the city manager and the team for putting this together. It's just a notification of the work they're doing. We all got copies of this, I'm sure we've looked through it. There are some dates where they're going to be doing some other additional research and input from the community. Those dates are in the paper in this package here. Any of the residents at home, if you want it, you can call the office or you can come in. I'm not sure if it's online, but we're just engaging the community of what's going on. So, it's an ongoing process. So, just wanted, the community to know that, we appreciate all of this. Already submitted some of the reports and some of the ideas, what they think we should be doing and considering. And I want to thank the city manager and the team for doing the work.
Thank you.
Thank you Counselor, I echo the sentiments and thoughts of the Counselor. Moving on to the next item.
Next communication received from the city manager, requesting approval of union contract with Teamsters Local 25, DPW. Dear councilors pursuant to Section 4-3L of the Chelsea City Charter, I am writing to request city council approval for the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated with Teamsters Local 25, International Brotherhood of Teamsters covering DPW employees for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. A copy of the memorandum of agreement is attached. The memorandum of agreement outlines the changes to the contract terms. Major cost items of this particular agreement are annual raises in the following amounts. FY '26, 4%. FY '27, 3.5%. And FY '28, 3%. In addition, in FY '26, there will be a one-time $1,200 base wage increase. The total cost of the contract over three years is approximately $240,000. I respectfully ask that the city council approve the cost items of this contract, since the contract takes effect July 1st, 2025.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, Counselor Brown, objecting. Yes, you have the floor.
So, I was hoping that we can actually vote on this tonight. I spoke to the city manager, it's a really nice piece of work that's being done for our community here. The union and our team here agreed and ratified this contract. There's no money that's required of us on this vote this year. Next year, I believe there's money coming up because of the increase of the salaries. But if we can, I would, you know, see if we can vote on it tonight. So, I ask if it's okay, we vote on it tonight to pass it.
Are there any objections?
Any objections?
Counselor Jimenez?
Sorry, are we keeping it in order and doing it later, or are we moving it out of order to now?
No, it's coming up, we have something coming up.
Okay, great.
All right, awesome, thanks team, moving on to the next item. Yes, and that's what Jimenez pushed forward.
Next communication received from the city manager regarding a proposal for digital residential parking permits. Dear councilors, I am writing to share a proposal to transition from physical residential parking stickers to a digital system. This proposal means that residents will no longer have to show a printed sticker on their vehicle. Instead, we will leverage the parking enforcement software we have today, which already tracks and maintains an electronic database of all approved vehicles. This will result in operational efficiencies, but more importantly, it will result in a better customer service experience for our residents. In 2025, the city made improvements in shortening lines in City Hall by emphasizing our online renewal process. Our community is made up of hardworking residents, of whom many do not have the time to apply in person. The online process saves a lot of time and frustration for many of our residents. This year, we also extended the hours of operation between last week of February and the first week of March. This small change provided our residents with more flexible hours. We intend to do this every year going forward. In 2026, the city will like to introduce new digital residential parking permits. Residents who apply and are approved online will no longer wait to receive a physical sticker in the mail. Applicants will receive an email confirmation of their approval from our online portal. This will eliminate the risk of a sticker being lost or damaged in the mail and residents will no longer need to place a physical sticker on their windshields. This new process will further incentivize residents to use the online portal and will result in less frustrating lines.
Madam President, I'd like to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication if there are no objections. And I'd like to speak on it real quick.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor Counselor.
I just want to thank the city manager for this. I know that, at least for me, taking off the stickers year over year is not a very fun process, especially when you have a few years' worth of stickers that you need to take off. The other piece is, by doing this, we would basically remove the time where, you know, you have the sticker and you just haven't put it on the car yet and you get a ticket, which actually happened to me this year. So, really exciting to not be getting another one of those tickets this year. And I know that, you know, that is likely something that happens to other residents as well. So, just, you know, very grateful for the work that we're doing to minimize the impact of these long lines that we've had for many years at the clerk's office, thank you.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Teshi.
Let me know who came up with this idea, it's good.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Sandig.
I believe that Revere already does this and so we, there is some, maybe not longitudinal data, but I don't know how long they've done it for, but I think they made this shift and it sounds like it's been successful for them. So, I'm sorry. Oh, Salem as well, so there is some data out there as to how it's worked. So, I agree that it's, the reasons you've outlined in your letter are really important reasons to try to change the process, so.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you again, I just, you know, again, I'm all for it, but again, I just want us to realize when we do this, if we do this, let's do all the diligence we can to make sure the residents are aware of it. This is one of our most important sticker program, if we're going to do away with it and just do it paperless, it's a great idea, but I just want us to really go out and put an effort in advertising and making sure people are aware of it. So, we don't get the backlash, thank you.
Thank you Counselor. Seeing no other comments, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received from the city manager, requesting approval for a department to pay prior year expense. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request approval for the Department of Housing and Community Development to make payments on prior year expenses from their FY '25 budget.
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
Next communication received from the city manager, requesting authorization for mass development grant for a Forbes Street readiness project. Dear councilors, I am writing with a request for the city council to authorize the use of grant funds from Forbes site. The city of Chelsea applied and successfully secured funding through mass development site readiness grant for $150,000. Through this grant, the city will complete due diligence work at the Forbes site. The selected consultant will complete the following scope of work. Survey services: Update topographic utility and property condition surveys to inform site planning. Civil engineering analysis: Assess site constraints, utility infrastructure, and potential zoning and public access requirements. Environmental services: Review existing contamination conditions, inspect fire damaged areas, and prepare remediation cost estimates. Permitting assessment: Evaluate environmental, zoning, and historical permitting requirements, including Chapter 91 and coastal zone management considerations. Structural evaluation: Analyze the structural condition of the bridge providing access to the site, including MBTA coordination. Architectural amassing studies: Create conceptual building layouts and amassing diagrams under different zoning and waterfront access scenarios. And comprehensive reporting: Summarize findings in a final report to guide future public discussion, private development interest, and infrastructure planning. This work is vital to advancing a community-informed, resilient redevelopment strategy.
Madam President, I'd move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file. And there'll be something coming up under new business.
Seeing no objections, thank you Counselor, moving on.
Next communication received from the city manager, providing an update on housing and community development grants. Dear councilors, I'm writing to share a comprehensive report outlining various grant programs currently being managed by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The pursuit and oversight of grants is a major priority for our city and our dedicated staff have done an outstanding job in securing funding that significantly enhances our ability to serve the community. Our Department of Housing and Community Development is managing approximately $27 million in grants across several key categories, including community development block grants, economic development, transportation and infrastructure, climate resiliency, and open space improvements. These funds are critical to advancing a wide range of city projects. These projects would be impossible to finance through the municipal budget and local taxes alone. Because of these grant resources, we are able to upgrade our parks and open spaces, replace sidewalks and roadways, modernize our water and sewer infrastructure, and address climate resiliency challenges. These improvements not only benefit our residents directly, but also help us build a stronger, more sustainable future for Chelsea. The city's success is due to our staff's commitment to writing compelling and competitive applications, as well as their diligence in ensuring that all grants are managed in full compliance with local, state, and federal requirements. This work requires both qualified personnel and a strong financial infrastructure, both of which are essential to the continued success of our city. Grants must continue to play a critical role in helping us meet the needs of our residents in a fiscally responsible manner.
Madam President, I'd like to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none, thank you Counselor, moving on.
Our next communication received from the city manager, requesting approval of a five-year contract for a quiet zone construction. Dear councilors, I'm writing with a request that the city council approve the extension of a contract with Daegu Electrical Corporation for up to five years in order to complete the construction of the quiet zone. Our current three-year contract with Daegu for the quiet zone work expires June 20th, 2025. As you know, we have experienced a significant delay in starting construction as we worked to receive the necessary plans from the MBTA, which owns the gray crossings where the quiet zone work will take place. With the assistance of state and agency leadership, we obtained the plans earlier this month. Our engineers are revising the design and preparing to seek a new round of approvals, but the work cannot be completed prior to the end of the contract. I am asking for approval to extend the contract for an additional two years until June 2027. We fully expect that the site construction and signal modifications will be completed well in advance of this deadline, but this allows the construction contract to align with the timeline we have to utilize grant funds for this project and will prevent the need to return to council should there be any unforeseen circumstances. Extending the...
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Something coming up under new business.
Thank you Counselor, moving on to the next item.
Our final communication received from the city manager regarding the friendly taking of properties for Island and River Flood Barrier. Dear councilors, the city of Chelsea has been working for many years, together with the city of Everett, on the Island and River Flood Barrier, a critical infrastructure project designed to protect thousands of residents and key facilities from severe coastal flooding. and key facilities from severe coastal flooding. Although the recent loss of a $50 million brick grant has delayed the construction timeline, the project remains a priority. In FY '25, Chelsea and Everett received a $5 million MVP state grant for design, engineering, and land acquisition related to the project. This grant will cover the costs for the cities to purchase the land abutting the project in order to make construction feasible in the future. This grant has a spending deadline of June 30th, 2025. After significant due diligence, legal review, and conversations with the property owners, we are ready to complete the first round of acquisitions. Moving forward at this stage ensures we maintain momentum and keep the project on track for eventual construction. This purchase is done through eminent domain procedures, but rest assured that these are friendly takings of properties. The property owners support the project and have worked closely with the city. It is mutually agreed that the city purchasing this land, along with the temporary--
Madam President, I'd ask to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, or something coming up under new business, can, can we just read the addresses of the properties taken and the amounts, please?
Sure. Clerk?
The first set of friendly takings are 145 Market Street and 359 Beecham Street.
With the, with the corresponding amounts?
145 Market Street and the amount of $821,163.51, and 359 Beecham Street and the amount of $937.587 and zero cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk. Moving on to the next item.
We completed second readings out of order. We move on to new business. First order under new business introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that pursuant to Section 4-3L of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with Teamsters Local 25, International Brotherhood of Teamsters, covering DPW employees, memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for the period July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028, dated April 22nd, 2025.
Counselor Taylor.
I actually would like to send this to the Ways and Means. It is a financial order, and I feel like all financial orders need to go through the Ways and Means Committee.
Counselor Jimenez?
I thought, I thought this was just approving the contract and not a financial order. Am I missing something?
It's ID 25F-23.
Yeah, there's money attached to it.
I guess, yeah, okay, yeah.
The bargaining of-- Yes. City Manager, could you share with us some insight regarding the order?
Move to suspend the rules so that the city manager can answer questions if there are no objections.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Council. I did not get clarification from our city solicitor ahead of time, if it could be done on, on one vote. But just so we're clear, the, the, what the city council is approving is a new three-year contract, right? And all of our contracts are pending appropriation, obviously. The, the cost components are built into, into the FY '26 budget, which will be presented to the city council on, on Monday, night in particular, when we review the DPW items. The, the current contract is in place and expires on June 30th of this year, which, you know, means that we're ahead of the game, obviously, in terms of, of negotiating the contract. And personally, what's excited about this one is that, uh, once this contract is, is ratified by the city council, it was ratified already by the body, by the union, the, the city no longer has any, any outstanding agreements. So we, all of our labor contracts at that point will be fully negotiated.
Thank you, City Manager. Counselor Brown, and then Counselor Taylor.
Madam President, thank you. I don't, if, if the council wants to send it to second reading, that's fine. I was just, you know, I had spoke to the manager. I was aware of this here, and it's already done. But if he wants to do it, that's fine, or the body wants to do it, that's great. I know we just have a lot coming up in the next few days, the next week with budget hearing. I did inform the clerk that I would be out of the country from the 20th after. So I was just hoping that we can just get through all the stuff we need to get through and try to get ready for the budgets and be able to take the votes when we need that. But if he wants to do it, no, no problem, Counselor.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I, you know, I, I, unfortunately, I haven't talked to the city manager about it. I, you, you, you--
I'm sorry, through the chair, please, Counselor.
So, you know, I, I just, I, I feel like, I feel like I need to do my due diligence in, in having all the financial orders come through my committee. So, you know, even if this is, you know, you know, I, I'm, I'm taking somebody else's word for it. I haven't asked any questions, haven't done any, you know, so, so I, you know, not that I, I'm sure that everything is, it will be fine, but I, I feel like that's, that's, that's my own due diligence, and I don't think anything is going to be affected negatively by doing that. Am I, is there, is there, is there any, is there any? I would ask the city manager if there's any reason why this needs to be done tonight or anything's going to be impacted. Nothing can happen before we approve the budget anyway. So, you know, this is just, I, I don't see any rush to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see no objections, and so--
Move to Ways and Means.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Next item under new business, we have an order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY '24 were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from current year FY '25 budget as noted. The Chelsea City Council authorizes the following expenditures to satisfy the unpaid balances that total $32,931.97 from prior years as follows.
Move to Ways and Means.
Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next item under new business, we have an order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Whereas the land located at 1C Forbes Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts, has been deemed a site suitable for a site readiness program administered by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, Mass Development. And whereas the City of Chelsea, a Massachusetts municipal corporation having a mailing address at 500 Broadway, Chelsea, Massachusetts, 02150, has been awarded a site readiness recoverable grant in the amount of $150,000 from Mass--
Madam President, I'd waive the rest of the reading and move to Ways and Means.
Seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
We have an order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a five-year contract with Daegle Electric Corporation for quiet zone construction for the Chelsea Public Works Department.
Move to, move to Ways and Means, please.
Seeing no objections. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Councilor Kelly Garcia. Whereas the most common sources of lead in drinking water are lead pipes, faucets, and plumbing fixtures.
I would ask if we could move it to the next meeting for when Kelly is here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sorry, quick question. Does moving it to the next meeting count as a second reading, next meeting? Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So that's, that, yeah, that, the motion that Counselor Robinson just put on the floor is to move it for when Kelly is back in the room. When we have that meeting, you're more than welcome to put in an order or a motion to move it to a subcommittee.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on now.
Next, we have an order introduced by Councilor Coopero. Order that the city manager direct the Department of Public Works to paint stop markings at the intersection of Central Avenue and Shawman Street.
Accept and file, eh, was already done. Adopt under suspension was already done. The city manager already did it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right.
Order introduced by Councilor Coopero. Order that the city manager direct the parking clerk to communicate with the parking enforcement contractor to have more enforcement of overnight residential parking permits.
Seeing none, you have the floor, Counselor.
One of the biggest problems we have is parking. And one of the ways we can eliminate people from parking all over the place is by going out at night and enforcing the parking program. Because I, I don't see too many people enforcing it. I don't even know how many we have. Do we have parking enforcement people to go out, or is that policemen going out and doing that? So that's what we need. We need more enforcement of the parking program so there will be less issues where people take in other people's parking where they don't belong here. They don't belong here, they shouldn't be here, so they shouldn't. So I would like the city manager to instruct to put more enforcement at night to make sure that people are following the regulations. And the ones that live here have more places to park instead of the ones that don't live here taking away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President, sorry, has there been a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Oh, I-- Sorry, I, I missed that. I, I have a question, I guess, first. So I, I'd like to suspend the rules to ask the city manager a question, if that is possible.
Seeing no objections. City Manager, if you can join us.
And I'll just start, start asking while you get up there. I'm, I'm just curious, you know, I know that there's, we, we have this contract. You know, if we are moving to have more enforcement of overnight residential parking, is there a cost attached to this, and what does that look like? And if you could just clarify?
Absolutely. What, I think what's, the contract that we have is, is to provide service. I think we can increase the number of staffing they do. So at the moment, it's one vehicle, right? And it's, it's two employees of, of, of the contractor and a, a police officer as well, right? So it's both that, that basically travel at, at the same time. The, the, the police officer handles the non-traffic-related things, right? Like if someone is at a hydrant, or if a vehicle has to be towed, and those kind of things. The, the parking enforcement vehicle takes care of sticker issues, right? Or things like that. I think that, that we can trial it, you know, and, and see, obviously, if, if, you know, the, the contract is based on revenue, right? So I, I, I do expect that additional tickets will be given, right? And that will offset the cost. I think, I think it's, it's a matter of, you know, of, of how many tickets they're able to issue, right? And that cost balance, because I, it does mean that a, a whole nother crew has to go out, right? So it, it, it's one more police vehicle and one more car with two more employees. But it, it is possible, and something that we can look into and report back to the city council on the effectiveness.
Great, yeah, I, I, I'm in support of, of doing that. I was just curious to, to think through what the cost would be attached to it. So thank you, I, yeah, withdraw my objection.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President.
Counselor Taylor.
So I, I would, I, I would just ask one additional question. I'm, I'm, I'm all for more enforcement on this issue. However, I would point out that every time I drive down Broadway, it's like a obstacle course because of all the double-parked cars, which I have been complaining about for some time. And there has been zero enforcement about any of that. I understand the travails of driving and, and trying to park in Chelsea, which is a reason why I keep harping on this issue. But I, I would like to really see more enforcement of people consistently double parking and causing not only delays, but safety hazards with oncoming buses, pedestrians, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sandigay.
I just wanted to say that for the double parking issue on Broadway, just, it's very near to home. I have seen the police stopping vehicles and telling vehicles to move along quite frequently. I'm not sure if they're receiving any parking violation amounts, but they are asked to go, and so it has been better. It, it's a little complicated right now because so much else is happening there, but I have seen them. I have, I really have.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda, we have an order introduced by the council president. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 43, Section 30, a public hearing shall be scheduled on June 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM to discuss the proposed eminent domain taking of 145 Market Street and 359 Beecham Street.
Move to adopt under unanimous--
Suspension?
Unanimously under suspension?
Seeing no objections. Counselor Brown?
June 2nd. That will be during your next council meeting, first meeting in June.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk.
We have one item introduced by Councilor Coopero received late. If there are no objections to receiving the late order.
Seeing no objections.
Order that the city manager direct the Commissioner of Public Works to provide reminders to all private trash haulers that indicate trash may not be picked up before 7:00 AM in the City of Chelsea.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. You'd like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
It's come to my attention that there's been somebody hauling trash out of District 6 at 2:00 in the morning. They're picking up, I don't know, it's coming there, it's, it's Maverick Street. Around that area, somebody called me and told me that they're picking up trash at 2:00 in the morning. I was always wondering, who picks up trash 2:00 in the morning? That is the craziest thing I ever heard. You know? And so I would like the city manager and DPW director to send a letter to all these private contractors. They do pick up trash, not to pick up any trash at 2:00 in the morning, because it disturbs people. They're sleeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Moving on to public announcements.
I got a shout-out.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to just thank the youth and everyone. This weekend, we had a great youth rides festival. It was tremendous. We had some of our council members there to support the youth. Our state representative was there. School committee members were there. It was a lot of youth. We got to hear from them. We got to sit up in close contact with them and talk to them and find out some of the things they really engage in, engaging in. One, the group that I was in, and my fellow council will love this, is that none of them knew who Johnny Ruiz was. So I said, you know, one of the things that we do as city councilors, we advocate for certain things. So I put a test to them. I said, you know, you folks, and these are seniors in Chelsea High. And I said, these are some of the things that we like to hear. So it was really, really weird not to hear, to hear that they hadn't heard of Johnny Ruiz, but we were promoting him and telling him about them. But it was a really good festival. It was very knowledgeable. It had everything from healthy eating to exercise to, you know, going to college. It was, the students were very great. B, who helped put that together with all the vendors, did a great, fantastic job. But it just goes to show us that, you know, we still have a lot of work to do to make sure they know our history and also some of the great people that come from our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Teshi.
I would just remind the community that next week, we're going to have budget hearings. So if you want to find out where the city is pouring millions of dollars, I think we're doing a great job at it. Come over and find out.
Counselor Jimenez.
Just want to quickly mention that on Thursday of next week, May 15th, there's going to be the Fourth Annual Chelsea Research Festival, taking place at Chelsea High School. The festival highlights residents' contributions to science, and it brings back some of the folks that have done research on Chelsea to our community so that they can share back with the community some of the research that our, our folks and residents have participated in. It is a poster session. We have about 30 posters presenting, you know, researchers from, you know, universities in the area up to high school students that are presenting their own projects. So the first session is 1:30 to 3:00 PM, and the second session is 5:30 to 7:30 PM. So you can either go during the school day, or you can join the rest of the community in the evening. It's at the Chelsea High Red Gymnasium. So please swing by Thursday of next week.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
Next week, the 15th.
It's a great event. I would like to just announce that on Saturday, there will be a Mother's Day celebration at La Colaborativa for all the moms in Chelsea.
be a Mother's Day celebration at La Colaborativa for all the moms in Chelsea. Reach out to La Colaborativa, get more information on how you can sign up. Historically, this has been an event that we bring to all the moms in our community to honor them and ensure that they know how special they are and how important they are in our families and in the community as a whole. I actually have my mama here today, Elisa Be de Jesus. Yes? And I also have the young lady that made me a mom, Nalia Silvestre. And so it's really exciting. I'll be joining the celebration as well, and so for anyone who's interested, please call La Colaborativa. Now, I would like to move on to moments of silence.
One, one quick announcement. Actually, our chief of police will be honored next Thursday up in puberty for a special award on all his work on mental health and stuff.
Thank you, Councilor. Do we have any, yes, Councilor Sandigay?
Yes, one additional announcement, and that is, there is an African Latin Black festival scheduled for 12 to 4 on Saturday in Chelsea Square.
Awesome.
Yes.
Love that. Love that. Thank you for sharing. Any moments of silence? No? I would just end with a moment of silence in general for our community, with the recent violence that we have seen, the losses that we have seen, for just our families, our community as a whole, our youth, keeping them in our prayers and ensuring that we continue to work together as a community for their safety and our city as a whole. Okay. Ending adjourned.